Good evening, everyone. Time is five o'clock. I'd like to call this Facilities Committee Meeting of the Department of Independent School and Board of Trustees to order. Do we have any public comments, Connie?
No, we do not.
Not, we'll move forward. We'll go to 3A, School Naming Committee Update. Let me guess. Mike Morgan?
This might be the Mike Morgan show.
Yes.
He's got a few items up for you, so.
Let's do it. We have a huge amount of some great information for y'all and some good discussion and some things we need to kind of work on. So I'm excited to be here. So it's great to be here tonight. I do want to give an update. We know that we've been kind of operating on our school naming committee process as outlined in policy. Very excited as we went through. So the purpose tonight is to review on the process, kind of where we are, what the next steps are, so that the Board of Trustees can take action on these. Just a reminder, this is one of those things where kind of the work of Policy Committee and Facilities Committee and Full Board all kind of come together. So we, a couple of years ago, or two years ago, we went back and reworked our CW Local, which is the policy that governs naming process. And since that time, we've had a couple of, two district athletic facilities that have been named for individuals that are important to the community. We've also got their nomination process for our elementary schools 12 and 13, where we had about a six-week window where we solicited nominations from the community. And as our policy says, that we will have a school name selection committee anytime we're naming a new campus. So the policy is direct on that, that that's the one, the one time that we're required to, as a district, have a school name selection committee. That the school name selection committee will take nominations and narrow them down and make appropriate recommendations to the Board, and that the Board will have final approval of the naming of the new campus facilities. So the big thing about the, is we take these nominations and our community came up with some really, really well-thought-out and really deserving nominations, having some great dialogue with the committee. The committee will wrap up its work this week, and that we will be able to bring those to y'all to do it. So a little bit of precedence, just to kind of start framing the discussion for next Monday, is of our 19 campuses that we have right now, 14 of those campuses are named after either geographic or historical type references. So you have everything from your neighborhood names, like Leon Heights, Miller Heights, kind of the ones named after the street area that they're from, Sparta, some named after geographic locations, like North Belton Middle School, South Belton Middle School. And then you have the ones named after some historical, like Chisholm Trail because of Belton's proximity on the Chisholm Trail, and Charter Oak because of the Charter Oak that's kind of a community icon. We also have three campuses named after individuals. So we have Pearl Elementary, Tarver Elementary, and Belton UTEC at Wasco. And I kind of put the dates on those of when the campus originally was built and then when it became its current incarnation of the name. And then we have two campuses that are just simply named after their function. We have Belton Early Childhood School and the District Alternative for DEP Camps as well. So kind of looking at those, just kind of give a little context of what our current reality is, and we don't have a, it's not a one standard that all names are, all campuses have been named after one type. There's a mixture of types of things our schools have been named after. This is some information we kind of shared with our committee, our school naming committee. I thought that the one on Alice J. Tarver is really interesting, that it was a Belton teacher nearly 30 years, and this is the plaque that hangs on the campus, but it has a really cool capo on there below that. Of course, we're all familiar with the work of Mr. Pearl and the campuses named after him that's been in operation for over 20 years now. And we did have Wasco. We do have, as I mentioned earlier, two athletic facilities that have been named after the adoption of CW Local, and we do have one district facility, which is the Penjama Park Center. So you know, naming the batting facilities over at Lake Belton High School or over Jase and naming the baseball field at Belton High School, Coach Tewel Field have been two other ways that we've seen this policy live out in action. Next steps, so we are getting, the final committee meeting is coming up. We anticipate a very robust conversation and protocol process where we get to some final recommendations. The recommendations will be officially communicated out to the Board with time to consider and think through and kind of be ready for deliberations and action on November 14th. And then at that point in time, setting up a time for official recognition for would be appropriate with the different types of recognitions you do when you name a facility. So there won't actually be a type of ceremonial type thing on Monday night. We'll just take the action on the name and then we'll take appropriate actions to start the ceremonial parts of it after that. But as I mentioned, the nominations that came in were very well thought out. All, every single one were representative in a positive light of this community. There wasn't a lot of, you know, to name it after celebrities or national figures or anything like that. Everyone had, every nomination had a local flair to it, whether it be geographical, historical, or for. I would answer, any questions on process that you might have, any discussion? I know it's a, it's been a long run to finish this process.
Just a couple of basic questions. How many people are on the committee that are citizens or stakeholders?
Twelve.
Twelve? And y'all have two meetings so far?
We've had, we've had one lengthy meeting. And we kind of, after the first meeting, we decided, after receiving all the information, having some initial discussions on the nominees, reviewing policy, reviewing the process, we felt like if they had enough time to really do their homework, really review, and come back with kind of some thoughts, that we felt like we could wrap it up in a second. So we're going to stay on along, we need to stay to get to a point where we have recommendations.
I guess for me, you know, looking at the plaque, and I thought this was interesting because I was sitting in the office this morning, my dad was sitting in there back in the warehouse, and I said, Dad, have you ever heard of Alice J. Tarver? My dad knows everybody.
Right.
He didn't know who that was. So if we get some names brought forth to us Monday night, are we going to have some descriptions and some historical background to these? Or if it's a geographical, this is the reason why, you know, because of, you know, four score and whatever years ago, whatever?
Yes.
So we're going to have some of that?
When we went out for nominations, we really asked for three questions. We really asked for four questions. So what is the name you're recommending? Is it particular to one campus or the other, or would you prefer it to be considered for both campuses? And then what's kind of the significance of that? And then basically give us any additional information that you can. So I was really impressed with the amount of detail that most of our nominators went into. So you will absolutely get all of that information in any other context we can give y'all with the information right now.
And then see it being this is in an open meeting and with the public comment portion of this, we're not going to be able to consider, let's say the committee brings forth three nominations per, or four, whatever, and someone in the open meeting and public comments brings forth, and they stand up there and they give their interpretation of what they think the name should be, is that not going to be under consideration?
By policy, at that point, and I can let Matt speak to this too, my interpretation of the policy would be, we had an official nomination period that ended on October 15th, and the only way I think that anything like that would happen is if the Board decided to table it and take no action that night. I mean, there is, there would be, since the final, final decision lies with the Board of Trustees, if none of the recommendations met Board standards, or a, I guess, then I guess you couldn't technically table it. So that would be the only way that that type of thing, and then probably we would have to come back to ask for direction, or we reopen nominations, or we do it in that type of scenario.
Ultimately, it's your choice. It says in policy that we'll have a committee, but it doesn't say in policy that you have to accept the committee's recommendations. And I take, I don't say that lightly, because I think it would be a mistake for a Board not to do that, to get a committee going and then just ignore the recommendations so the committee comes up with it. But ultimately, in policy, it just says that you have the final authority for naming the facilities and our school. So this committee, their job is to help you from a community perspective, and I do believe that Mike has done a really good job getting a broad representation from our community for us. So I think that you'll be given some good recommendations based on their last committee meetings work, and then it's up to the Board on what you'd like to do, if you'd like to table it. At the end of all that, and bring your own name forward, that's a choice the Board needs to make.
I know we talked about this back in early September, that we felt like we wanted it to be a quicker process than longer. Do you feel like the pace, I mean, having one and then the second, was that too fast?
I believe so. I mean, I think that the timing on it, I would have liked, I think the timing's been good. I think that if we, the thoughtfulness of nominations for the committee, and we went to a broad range of people to make nominations, it wasn't, we wanted people that had kids in the school, ownership in the school, had had a working knowledge in a lot of cases of the community. And I think as it states in policy, we wanted, I believe the exact word that he uses, that we wanted a diverse group of stakeholders. So that's, as we assemble a group of parents and community members and students and staff members, I think that we represented that well in all, both areas of the district, north and south, families that have been here a long time, families that are relatively newer but represent the communities that these schools will ultimately serve and the greater community as a whole. So I, no, I do think that, I was, you know, I was of the initial thought of a bigger group and a longer process, and, you know, so we got some feedback from you guys of a smaller group and a quicker process, and I really think that's turned out to be the benefit. And this, the way that that committee has handled this, I think that they feel that it's an honor to get to serve in this way, they're taking it that way. So I think it helps with just the quality of nominations that we make too. So I mean, when you have really quality nominations submitted, I think it lends to a healthier process, and I think, I think that some good, some good work, some good nominations will come out of it, and I think some good nominations won't be able to come out of it, just some solid ones.
Yeah. I think it'll be fun. I know where we sat on the last one for Charter Oak. We were kind of almost so exhausted by the Lake Belton High School that the Charter Oak thing came pretty easy, but I think this is a better way to do it ultimately, the more community input. I like this process.
Well, we definitely will be anxious for discussion afterwards and kind of get feedback on the process. And as we continue to grow as a community, this is a process we'll probably have to live out again at some point in the future. And so I think with the policy update, this is our first go-around naming schools, I feel like it's been positive so far, and I hope that we all get some, that some of this discussion out. So excited about it.
All right, so moving on, we'll talk a little bit about attendance, zone parameters, kind of talk about the process, I guess, that we're in at this point.
We are, and I think tonight, I want to talk about, the purpose tonight is to review progress. So we have made some progress in the, in the process that we brought to y'all, talked about two months ago, talk about next steps, and then also give you guys your first opportunity as a Facilities Committee to give us some input on attendance boundary parameters. And I'll explain a little more about that as we go. So you can see back to our original attendance boundary process. We opened this in September by doing some addition, some initial discussions, outlining process, having some initial stakeholder meetings on our team about what we relied, met with our demographer in October. We met, had our demographer update as a Facilities Committee and as a Full Board and as our executive team. And so we've taken that and we've worked with our demographer. Zonda Education is going to help us through this process as well, just kind of organize the data for discussion tonight as the Facilities Committee input. Along the way, we have also gathered input from our long-range facility planning team. So their big input session is going to be at their November 28th meeting, but we were able at their September meeting to go ahead and gain some initial input from them, as well as our DEWIC committee, where I was able to get on their agenda and get feedback from DEWIC too as well. And I'll explain a little bit more about that as we, as we talk through the parameter process. One thing, and I left, I left this graphic as originally presented to the Full Board and to the Facilities Committee. I had an opportunity on there for Facilities Committee input in December, but we don't have a Facilities Committee meeting in December. So I left that on there, so I'll probably put it next by that, but isn't that correct?
We've already canceled them.
We don't have them in December. I know that disappoints you.
In August, when I was creating this, I didn't take that into account. But we do have a board workshop scheduled for December, which I think will actually be better, because it's a chance for us to have a discussion with the Full Board around where we're at and the process of what next step we'll be. So by that point, we will have full, we will have our full range of input on parameters, and we will also have our first, we will also have our first iterations with feedback from our long-range facility planning team on some model zoning's that you guys can weigh in on and give us some feedback on as we work for the ones that we want to take up to the community in January and give community feedback on. So that's going to be, I think December's going to be an important month for us, because we're going to be able to give y'all a lot of information, and we're going to be able to really kind of get input for you guys on where we want for the next. So we're, here's kind of.
Did you have a call that, I thought you were going to say something? Well, I just know, my one time of being in this before, I know that the process that Zonda, that, you know, at that time Templeton Demographics walked us through, Dr. Kecanin had a lot of experience in this in her time at Belton, and I thought that we really worked the process as well as we could, and then it still ended up, we had hot spots. So I think that we need to make sure messaging-wise, this go-around with the public is that, number one, because of, Bob has said this several times, you can't balance the numbers, because you don't know what the size of the next class up is going to be. I know with my wife, being an elementary teacher for years, there'll be years where you'll have a certain number of sections at each campus, that fluctuates. So it's really hard to put a, they all need to be, we have this thing balanced out. But I don't think the public really understands the complexities of how large the next class coming up is and some of those type of things. I think that's something we need to make sure we have out there for people to understand. It isn't about balancing. And then the last go-around too, we kind of threw that five-year thing on there, and I think some people are coming back, kind of being critical of, well, you guarantee us five years? No, we ain't guaranteeing. This is what our goal is, is to make this work. But as much as we can prepare and look at the maps, I know from being in construction, there's some property out there that's being talked about right now, behind the scenes in places, that is going to be developed that Bob and those guys don't know about. So it's really hard to understand that at the time too, to understand what happened at Chisholm or at some of those places. You can't really see that. So I'd like to see a little bit more of that information being presented to the public that this isn't an end-all, this isn't a, this isn't just, you can't measure perfect. This is a non-perfect procedure that we're going to go through to balance this thing as well as we can, but there's a lot of unforeseen things in this process.
I think one of the important things to know, and I know it will be your first time going through attendance boundary process and stuff, we also need to be really clear, we are not going to make everyone happy. Like that isn't, that isn't the way this works, because you're talking about something that's really important to community members, and usually some of those values and some of the parameters that Mike's going to talk to you about, they come in conflict with what an individual family might want sometime. And so I think your point is well-taken. You have to be really clear with people that you can't make promises you can't keep. You need them to know that it's not going to be perfect. Like if you're not going to have 700 kids in every school all the time, it's just, it doesn't work that way. And then the other piece is that there's, there's a thoughtful way to realize that we're not going to make everybody happy along the way. We've got to stick to the parameters that you all ultimately set as a Board, and that we all feel good about.
And there's another low-hanging fruit that I think is out there for some folks that are always negative about everything. They're just always looking for the easy thing to find, is that we need, we need to explain about the transfer policies better in our messaging to the public. Explain what our 4% goal is, explain how many of these kids are employee kids, and then explain kind of how we put them, where we put them, based on, you know, like Sparta gets more because of the two other schools that are located close. I think some of those things need to be explained this time better, so maybe people can't just say, well, we just need to quit transfer kids. That's easy. Well, maybe if we explained that a little bit better this go-around, people would understand. It's not that easy.
Sounds good. Good work on that.
One of the common feedbacks I get on transfers too is the misconception that people get to choose.
Yeah.
And then there's not, not much choice at all, especially throughout district transfers. So we can talk, we can talk through that as we go. So we've met, like I said, we've met a couple times, we've started looking at some of the growth projections, we've started looking at some of the neighborhood maps, but we also are going to ask our Board to really help us zero in on parameters. And we're going to help gather stakeholder input on that to give you guys some information about what some of the different groups out there, their perception of parameters as well. But I wanted to take a few minutes tonight and talk about the ones we've kind of narrowed it down to, and kind of go through some of the same discussion that we've had with our long-range facility planning team, with our DEWIC conversation we're going to have tonight. It's a conversation we're going to have with the principals, and it's also a conversation we're going to have an opportunity for community input on this as well, before we come back to y'all in December. So we kind of, we think we're going to go through several levels of input on parameter considerations, but wanted to kind of go through these, have a quick discussion. Like Matt said, some of these conflict. You cannot necessarily guarantee neighborhood unity and that you're going to balance socioeconomics. That's, that's not always going to go hand-in-hand. Some of these are complementary. You might, can say that we're going to try to optimize space while planning for growth. And so I want to kind of go through these, kind of talk through some of those types of things, and then I'm going to ask, before y'all go home tonight, y'all quickly just give us a little feedback too on just kind of where y'all are at right now, which ones do stick out to you, some of the ones, because as we start building some models, there has to be some parameter considerations, and it may be, this, this model is built around neighborhood unity as being a top priority, and this model is built around optimized spacing capacity being a top, top priority. And so you see how the difference whenever you prioritize different things. So optimizing spacing capacity, obviously, in any, in any model that we end up adopting, we're going to want the most efficient use of our buildings we can. But how far you go to that is going to be to that, that point in time about, are you trying to get people enrollment and all, are you trying to, you know, use your spacing capacity to the greatest extent, plan for growth and all, but neighborhood unity would be number two, do we try to keep subdivisions and neighborhoods together to the greatest extent possible? So we may fill one school up a little bit more, but it keeps everybody that lives in that, in that community together in one camp. Growth, so growth is those situations like we're living out in Charter Oak right now. So we adopted some attendance boundaries, attendance zones in 2000, that started in 2019, that opened Charter Oak with less, right around 400 students or so in it. But as we've seen, the growth that's come in that, in that region by 2024, it's going to be our third fullest campus of all of our campuses. So do you, how do you plan for the growth, and how much of a priority do you make that in? So you might look at something that may look a little wonky on the front end, but if you know 600 houses are coming in that attendance zone in the next four years, then you may, you definitely need to plan for that growth, so you're not having to move other kids. Socioeconomic factors, that would be where you give consideration to balancing the socioeconomic makeup of each attendance zone. Proximity is one that we've kind of, you could really kind of combine proximity to a lot of other ones, but that is the one that makes the most sense, to put the people at the campus closest to where they live. And I, really, I think in almost any model, you're going to try to do that while balancing these other parameters. Family impact, that means the best effort will be made to impact changing attendance zones will have on families. And then some people would, some people would interpret that as being, we want to impact the fewest families possible. So if we have three models, in this model, 37% of the families are impacted, in this one, 29% are impacted, in this one, 24% is impacted, you would impact the least families at 24%. But it may, family impact comes into conflict with some of the other factors. Feeder pattern alignment, that means that we try to keep elementary's kids together as much as we can going to middle school, and we keep middle school kids together as much as we can going to high school. Right now, we have feeder pattern, full feeder pattern alignment for middle school, high school. We have three campuses that have some split feeder pattern alignment, so starting to agree, a very small group from Lakewood, a bigger group at Charter Oak, and a bigger group at Pearl. So we do have some split elementary feeder patterns now currently. And then balancing for facility and program equity, and that could be where you make some considerations around also programs that are offered at some schools, where you offer some programs at other schools that may pull some enrollment to that school, or you don't have the population to support certain programs, so you move that program to another school. Those things, types of things can be considered in this process as well. There's one more that has come up that I want, is, I'm going to ask for some input on, and that is for traffic impact. That's one that our long-range facilities planning team said, that as we consider, one of the deciding factors that they would like to see, that they at least want to be in, again, the discussion is looking at, first, as someone mentioned, some road construction earlier, you know, is the road infrastructure there to get from this neighborhood to this school, or is it something we're going to be waiting on in the future? So that might be something to consider in some of the parameter discussions as well. So do y'all want to have a discussion about parameters? Any of them that you want to have questions on, any kind of first thoughts that come to mind? I am going to ask you to take eight of these and kind of just say, which ones do you think is most important, that we get it right, and which ones probably, not that all of them aren't important, but which one's most important to you right now, which one is the one that's probably that will have the least impact in your mind if it were only? I always, I always think about this stuff in terms of, if it were only me doing it, where would I start, where would I work out to?
Before we move on, Mike, where did these come from?
These came from a few sources. They came from, some of them were basically the, some of the parameters we used in our last, our last attendance boundary process. Some came from our consultant on this, which is on education, some came from doing research and just reading articles and looking at some processes in other school districts.
So it's not like these, the point being, it's not like these have been finalized, like this is the list that the long-range facilities committee has set or anything. We've pulled these from a few different spots for y'all to engage in a discussion about it tonight, okay?
These are some of the more common ones, and some of the ones that are more, that are most utilized in processes.
Well, that's what I was thinking when I was reading. They all seem very common sense parameters, and I feel like a few of them you could even combine, so to speak. I mean, as far as balancing, I would see that could even be combined with the optimizing spacing capacity. I think some that jumped out to me were obviously the space and balancing. I think a perspective that I uniquely have is having a child with special needs is in a certain program, and I remember a few years ago, there was, talking in one of our meetings that maybe he would benefit from another program, but that program was the furthest school away from us. And we struggled with that, because do I leave, do we leave our other kids back at the other, so then do I become an established parent at two different schools? That was a really hard decision, and thankfully, we were able to come back and say, let's keep them here, because they only had like one more year left. But I think that balancing is, I think, going to be probably more important than we might, we might realize, especially for some program. But I, but I do understand that we can't have all of those programs at every school. I get that, and I, but I'm glad that that one is definitely on the list, because I don't think we should lose sight on the perspective that while it might not be a very large population, it is a population of families that, the balancing of where your kids are going is really important.
Can I ask you a question on that too? So in that perspective, was that neighborhood unity an important piece for you in making that decision? So you wanted your son to be around peers in the school as well?
Well, it was, it was just because he was in NFA class, and so, but where we live, I mean, there's no one in our neighborhood that he's in the same program. For us, solely, it was, he was going to be removed from his siblings to be in a program that, granted, it probably would have served him better. And so they were very gracious to, you know, we could keep him there. But for us, it was just, it was the separation of our kids. And I struggled with that. And in fact, I remember having the conversation with my other son, who he even took it hard, what do you mean, he's going to go to another school? And those were just some natural kind of consequences to that. And so again, we were able to keep him there, but that was a tough, that was a tough decision, because do we keep him where his family, his siblings are at, or do we send him to where maybe he's better served? So I think that's just one perspective to just keep in mind. But again, I know that we can't have every program at every campus.
That, that might be a good part of our workshop discussion in December though, kind of look at what goes into some of those programming decisions, and then ultimately what some of those decisions, implications they might have on capacity on campus and things like that. So we can definitely kind of give information on when do we add? that. So we can definitely kind of give information on when do we add programs, when do, how do we evaluate, you know, what programs can we can offer on campuses, especially in regards to the number of students that need those services and things like that. So that's definitely a component we could put into the discussion in December when we come back as well.
A tip that I was looking at was optimizing spacing capacity, you know, as we're asking the community to help us, you know, fund new schools, you know, they wanna make sure that we're absolutely utilizing the space that we have before we ask for more money to build a school. So making sure we're optimizing the space at to full capacity. And then the other one was the feeder pattern. You know, children are vulnerable, and if they can make one friend and keep that one friend throughout the various grades, they'll have a friend for life. I know that some of us, if you've been in the same community most of your life, you still have those friends as an adult, and that's important. And so if we have the opportunity to keep to work on that feeder pattern alignment and keeping them with their peers, I think that's important.
Here are the parameters.
Give us all the study.
I ranked mine. I'm gonna give you all a share. Give me a little feedback, so that yeah. Here are the parameters that that our board used at the last at the last attendance boundary process. So this, the process, we actually went through this process and and finished it up, I believe, in February of two thousand nineteen, and then they were used whenever we opened our campuses in in August of two thousand nineteen, when we opened Charter Oak Elementary. So, but it's, one of the things was the design attendance zones, it could last for five years, and y'all can read, keep subdivisions together, kind of like the the neighborhood unity we talked about, efficient use of buildings to reduce overcrowding. So it's kind of optimize spacing capacity, design boundaries that facilitate efficient transportation routes, consider minimizing ride times, that kind of falls into that proximity discussion. Attempt to use natural boundary lines when possible. That was one that has was around a little bit. We did not get any any type of response at all from our our thirty-five or forty-member long-range facilities planning team. They they felt like that's gonna kind of happen naturally on some things, and it was one that didn't rise to the level of we would consider that over some of the other ones. I think if you'll remember in these, we're also adopting high school and middle school attendance boundaries, and it ended up being that, as it worked out, kind of the Leon River was, for the most part, the divider between the two high school feeder patterns. So I can't speak to others that were involved in that process, 'cause I think that's probably where that natural boundary line came in to be, one of the, one of the key parameters. Develop boundaries that support balanced demographics to the extent possible, consider subdivision traffic time, and then develop boundaries that allow for feeder patterns from elementary to middle and middle school to high to the greatest extent possible. So, you see some common themes, the things we just talked about. The the thing that's unique about each process, and as we've worked through this is, is determining with opening, you know, the difference between this time and last time is we were opening one school in the middle, and this time we're opening two schools on the extremities of the district along with increased capacity in one of our older and smaller campuses. So, it's from an elementary standpoint, we could expect this one to be a little more complex, but from a middle and high school standpoint, probably not nearly as much as opening a fourth middle school and a second high school. Those are some pretty considerable strains on on your on your process. So here's kind of a rundown of our stakeholder involvement so far. This is just particular to parameters, it's not not anything else. So we we got parameter input from our long-range facilities planning team, and that's how we kind of got to our starting point. We got we got stakeholder input from our district-wide education improvement committee, or D-WIC, and that group's made up primarily of teachers from across the district, and then and then we're gonna get some input from facilities committee tonight, and we're gonna get input from our principals, and we're gonna get input from our community. And kind of our idea on the community input is going to be a quick video, kind of talking about our process, talking about the the different parameters, giving them some base information, and discuss that, and then using a thought exchange. It's kind of our idea on that to get information back from them on what they value most, and it would be open to anybody that wants to give us input on it, and we'll have a way to synthesize that data and and come up with some some conclusions from what we get back from them. So, feel like, you know, not coming, I don't feel like this is a process where we're gonna bring y'all recommendations, but we want to give you good data from stakeholder input on what what our different stakeholder groups are saying. And I'll tell you, the ones we've done so far, they're not identical. The the input from our long-range facility planning team is a little different than the from the teacher. So that that is more community members and administrators on that team, and D-WIC's more a teacher group, even though we do have some teachers on our long-range facility planning team. So it's interesting to see kind of the different the different viewpoints that we're gonna get from some of the some of the data we get back.
Quick question, Mike. Where it says full board will make final decision in November, you're talking about the parameters.
The parameters, just for parameters, yes.
Just to be clear on that one.
Yes, yeah.
The second thing is, the only tight piece that I have as a superintendent in this is we we shouldn't make promises about attendance zones lasting five years. And I I understand, you know, our growth patterns at the time that the last ones were done were about two hundred, two hundred and fifty kids a year. I get it. We had over a thousand kids new to our district in the last two years. And so there's, I think making those promises puts us in a tough spot, puts future boards, future administrators in a tough spot when those promises are made. But the only tight thing that I'd ask you to do is, I'd really like to stay away from saying something like, we're gonna make these last for five years, because we were we were in a tight spot because of that.
Now, I just know that now that I'm old now, and all my kids have been through the whole entire process, all three of them, I think it's hard to explain to elementary parents about this neighborhood unity. The kids that I have lunch with in first grade are the kids that I'm gonna have lunch with when I'm forty-seven years old. That's not gonna happen. I tell you, the kids of my three hung out with at Lakewood Elementary are not the kids that they hung out with at their middle schools, and the kids that they hung out with their middle schools were not the kids that they graduated their senior year hanging out with, eating lunch in the lunchroom with, because they go in different directions because of extracurriculars. If you're an elementary parent, you're probably gonna move at least once while your kids are in school to a bigger house. So you're gonna move and move away from your kids. You look in these neighborhoods, and these kids don't play on the same ball teams. They don't, at Heritage Park, there's nine hundred kids down there, they all live in the same neighborhoods, but they're not on the same teams. So I think that idealistic view is very low on my wish list. I'm more about optimizing space, spending our money wisely, the true feeder pattern, I circle big middle school, 'cause I know pretty soon we're gonna have to look at a middle school, and that's gonna change the game as far as feeder patterns go when we get that next middle school. And then I know probably we're pushing it back a little bit further because our growth has slowed down some, that third high school is gonna change the game again.
Absolutely.
So I I think that's an idealistic way to look at things. Some people get way too wrapped up in the emotions of who their kids' friends are in first grade, probably won't be their kid's friend in fifth grade. So I get way less worried about those issues as I am about optimizing our space, traffic issues. I think we've dealt with that at Miller Heights. We've had to make some some pretty exceptional, y'all's work on that has been unbelievably good, what you did for that campus. So I think those are the more important things. For me, as an old jaded, three kids, been through the whole system, seen how things work from an emotional versus practical standpoint. I'm way less wrapped up in all those emotional things. I'm more about the practicality of what's gonna work best from a transportation, growth, facility standpoint.
So, yeah, and just to be clear on that, I want to make sure, so this is parameters, our part, if we stay on our schedule, our plan is to come back in February to have the discussion around final adoption. So that's kind of, that's kind of how this this schedule would work out. So, what I am gonna ask you to do is, I'm gonna be chugging you on, you aren't gonna get it right this second, but I would ask you before you leave tonight, if you would just kind of take those, the top eight-ish, and like, I think Matt was wise to say that we're not bound to this eight and only these eight, we can consider other things as well, but these seem to be the ones so far that most people are interested in, and most people feel like the things are very critical that, not that any of them are not critical, and understanding that some of them conflict with each other, but we kind of, kind of rank them, one being, do you think this is the most critical, we can't get this wrong, to eight being, if I had to rank them, this would be the one that I would think would have the least impact on my decisions. Any further discussion on this?
Hey, so going back to her point, though, very unique circumstances. So, let's say that you would have wanted your son to be able to go to that other program that would have fit him better, would there not be an opportunity for that child to be able to do that, split it up, but would y'all bust that kid also if they are special with program kids?
If it's a program that 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 child needs, that is not offered on their home campus, then we work out transportation.
So it was more was more about the splitting of the kids?
And we would allow, we would allow siblings to go as well, if this program was offered.
So we could let them go.
We could have siblings go as well, and we have in some cases.
And I think another piece to it was how far, I think it would have, it may have been a different circumstance if it was pretty close, but I, I mean, it was like the furthest school, it was, I mean, we're over, we're probably about a mile from Colina I C, and so it was going all the way over to High Point, which, that and the warning, it's not ideal.
I guess the people that aren't being helped at all in this process, again, are the people that are living over on ninety-three. I mean, those people are going to the elementary, that Charter Oak kids, or some of them go to Miller Heights, or those Charter Oak kids.
I think most of those are Charter Oak kids.
We call it Taylor Valley Road, backside.
Valley Ranch, Legacy Ranch.
Those kids, traffic, you gonna talk about getting to and from school for those folks? We haven't been able to, 'cause the growth wasn't on the other side of the highway, per se, but those folks are still gonna have a hard go.
And that's one of the, just, that's one of the, they come back south from middle school, 'cause they come, those those neighborhoods come back to go to middle school after Charter Oak. Those are the types of things we'll be looking at. Any other discussion on that? Thank y'all for taking part, and I look forward to seeing feedback, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be an interesting process. We've done a lot of work to do, but a lot of good conversations coming.
Absolutely. I will say one thing on the on the optimizing space and capacity and things like that, you know, that's also, Bob will tell you, Bob Templeton from Zongo will tell you, that's a tricky one to talk about as well, because you're never gonna have like an elementary school that's always in a hundred percent capacity, because your class sizes that come through the system fluctuate. And so there's gotta be a little bit of wiggle room there if our goal is to not pass portables on every campus. There's gotta be a little wiggle room in that as well. We could do something like bust any kids that are over the capacity at, say, Chisholm Trail Elementary School to other schools, but then again, you're not talking about maybe the educational best interest of that student. And I think we've gotta think about the educational best interest of the student too. So just keep in mind, that whole idea of optimizing space and capacity is a tricky one, because you have growth patterns, like we saw at Chisholm Trail Elementary School, where, yeah, we could have probably busted a couple of hundred kids from Chisholm Trails to other schools in the district, and spread them out all over, but it would've had impact on families, and we would've been splitting up families and that kind of stuff. So I think that's a tricky one, long-term, to keep in mind as well. We we will probably never have a situation where you're within ninety-five percent capacity of every elementary school at the same time.
I think something else, too, that I've seen other districts try to do that I've never really, just personally, Ty Taggart speaking here, I've never liked trying to balance socioeconomics and demographics by travel. I'm I'm a big about the proximity of the neighborhood versus, well, we need more of this type of kid at this school, so we're gonna drive past the school that they should've gone to to send, so we can balance our numbers out. I've never been a big fan of that. And also, when you're in a fast growth district, those things take care of themselves more over time because of growth.
And I think that's a, I think that was one of the parameters y'all had last time on this one. I think that's an interesting one. For me, particularly in elementary schools, if you ask a parent what they want out of their elementary school, well, they want their kid to feel safe, they want to feel like family at their school, they wanna know the teachers, they wanna know the administrators. And so, it generally lends itself more to a neighborhood concept than it does, I want my kid to go to a school that has these characteristics, I don't care if it's ten miles away from our home or not. So I I agree with you. I think the neighborhood school concept is one that generally benefits us at the elementary level.
You know, and something, too, that you've allowed us to do over the last two years, where we get to go visit these campuses, is when I walk into Miller Heights, which is our two hundred and some odd, you know, population campus, I didn't see anything different while on that classroom than I did when I walked in Chisholm Trail a year earlier. The quality of education was still there. Yeah, the building was bigger and prettier, but if we're still ensuring that the quality of education is is where it needs to be, the facility doesn't necessarily define, you know, it's it's really more about programs than what you're what you're talking about. I think that's, to me, is more so, yeah, we'd love for all of our kids to be going to a brand-new building, but it doesn't work that way in economics and bonds and things like that, so.
And I think y'all have done a really good job. Our last bond proposal that was approved by our community is addressing some of our older buildings, too. And so being able to address those older buildings, that you're, the quality of instruction should not vary by school. The kids should be able to get what they need, parents should feel positive about sending their kid to that school, and ultimately, if we can get to a spot where we have some neighborhood schools that with attendance boundaries that really work for us, I think that's a positive for us.
You know, one of the things, and this is great discussion, as I'm sitting here thinking about, you know, north versus south, because we definitely have that here in Melton, you cannot get away from the mentality that, you know, north is a richer side, south is a poorer side. Schools in the south are poorer, and although the education as we know it is the same quality of education as it is in the north, the connotation that the south is the poorer side is still here. It's been here the whole fifty-eight years I've been in this community, it's not going anywhere. And so, as we're talking about, you know, this socioeconomic piece, you know, although I'm not a fan, as Ty said, I'm not a fan, but at the same time, I don't think that we can put it to the side and don't and not think that it doesn't have something, because there may be opportunities that a child in a low socioeconomic status, that's, say, living out in the south, may see something a little different. And it's sometimes it's more your experiences or garnered more than just in the classroom. It's being around someone not like yourself that may give you opportunities to do something different. So that's my two cents.
And I think that Matt brought it out, though, that we've addressed more so in this last bond, at least from a facility standpoint, our needs in the south. You know, we're doing well with the brand-new school. We're, you know, already have Chisholm, but it's crowded, but we're adding on to Southwest, but we're also taking care of, we're fixing to see that in the next part of this presentation about what we're doing in our high school. We're addressing some of those needs, so we can add better programs and more educational opportunities for the folks on the south side, which I think overall, I think there was a gap there, obviously, from a facility standpoint, I think, for a while. We're gonna, we're catching up a little bit with this last bond.
There's, I I think there's no doubt, when you look at the age of facilities and you see a brand-new one versus an older one, how people feel about that is a real thing. I, this isn't the time or place where we can do it again another time, but, you know, eventually, we need to talk about also program options for for people. I don't think that it has, every school has the exact same thing, is we continue to grow, and that might provide some opportunities for people, like you said, if they want a different experience, if they want a an I V school experience, if they're able to go to an I V school and end up I S D in the future and stuff like that. So I think, after we've made the decision to have two high schools in the district, and we've gone through the growing pains of that, the more we talk about allowing some variation in our systems, so that we have different programs that are available, and that there's balance around, that that families could have an opportunity to say, well, I hear this is a STEM school, and I'm really excited, my kid is very interested in in science-type things, and I'd like my kid to go to a STEM school. And those are good discussions for us to have, because those charter schools and in in private schools, they're having those discussions right now. They're talking about how they can look at a market in public school systems that we don't fulfill right now. And I think choice is one of those things, so we gotta, we gotta be better than that, and talk about how we provide choices up in I S D.
All right. That conversation is a great segue into our next.
Mike's like, all right, time to move on.
Our next one tonight, and that is to talk about my projects. I'm really excited about this one, because I feel like for the first time, we really have some details to give you guys. It seems like the first few have been kind of, well, we're still kind of in design, we're having some meetings, I mean, we have some things we can show you tonight. We've talked a little bit tonight, so we're excited about that. Do have members of our team here tonight, so David and Steve and Melissa from the from the financial side and the design side, construction side, can hopefully if I if I fall short of being able to answer questions tonight, they can jump in and help me give you the information you need. But we're really excited about this. So our purpose tonight is to give you guys update on active projects, put Delta Delta Program- guys an update on active projects, uh, put Delta, Delta program up at the front, we haven't been able to give you a lot of detail about Belton, because there hasn't been a lot, but now we have some, so, uh, we, we've kind of finished the initial program requirements, so several meetings with, with members of our special program staff, they've had several meetings with the teachers that are actually teaching in our Delta program, we've had staff go to some other facilities, look around, I think, some information about Mary Hard Mailers meeting facility and some other things, so we got some initial program requirements, I'm gonna be able to show you an example of a concept plan here in a second. Projected schedule is, we certainly hope to be able to bring an architect to you in December, and then finish the design up in the spring and get started on construction. One of the things that, that we're still looking at for the Delta program facility is the location considerations, so, we've been actively looking for commercial property in the district, is there a commercial building out there that kind of meets what we think the square, the square footage needs are gonna be, and if so, is it available, and if so, would it work for our purpose? We've also been looking at property that we currently own, and do we have a place that would meet the needs of our Delta program, so we had, we were, we've had several ideas on some current property, on some current campus property, some current district property, some spaces that we feel like might could support our Delta program as well, so, we're hoping that, we've exhausted our, our search of commercial properties, we've exhausted discussions on district properties, and when we come to you with, with an architectural selection, we also can come with you with a recommendation of where we want to buy and, and, and do a renovation, an addition project, or whether we want to build a new facility to, to meet the needs of these students, so, that, those are all things that are kind of coming quickly, the program requirements, we, we know we need some core academic space, we know we want some, some commons area, and I'll explain a little more about kind of what that means, we wanna have a food prep area, a chance to have a retail store, and then have our, our facility support spaces, so this is a, basically, a concept. Our final program could look like this building, or it could look differently, depending on what, what we end up finding, but, you can kind of see some of the different things here, there's an area as you come in, there's some classroom spaces, and a main vestibule, and kind of a collaborative area, as you move, and that's there on the right-hand side, as you move over, you've got like a big commons area, you've got some areas for, they have art projects and things like that, you can see some of the, a food service area, a laundry area, some other areas to meet the different needs, so, this would be something that, you gotta remember that there's a, gonna be kids in this program, a lot of the kids in this program will be out in jobs in the community as well, and only come back here for some additional training and things like that, and in some of the entry level, they'll be at this facility more, more often, but, we're thinking that probably overall, we're gonna be somewhere in a nine-to-eleven thousand square foot range, maybe a little less, maybe a little more, depending on what we find, but, kind of going through our programming needs, we think that this would meet the needs for, for a large Delta program that could serve our kids for, for years to come.
I wanna stress, that's concept, so that variation could happen, and again, to Mike's point, we might find a commercial facility to purchase, that won't look exactly like this, but we, you know, program design is, is the approach.
What's our estimated number of kids that we're looking to support? Just estimate.
At full growth, if all students that were eligible opted to be in the program, I'm thinking that they'd, at any one time around fifty or so students as well, as well.
Five years from now, the estimate will be at fifty-seven. So, again, that, a lot of that depends on your.
Overall growth as well, and growth of your special population in this district.
So, Second Street property, where the ag facility is, how much usable acreage do we have there that we can use possibly for this?
There's some, and there's an East, but there on the west side of the property, we're not gonna get access as well, so, that's one of the ones we talked about.
I know something of being in construction, and y'all know this, y'all are in this all the time, it's cheaper to build something from scratch most of the time than it is to go in and rent over something, especially when you're considering ADA requirements and all that kind of stuff too, so, I don't know, obviously, that's something y'all talk about. So, nine to eleven thousand square feet, y'all have done the math, what did we get? Two-point-five is kind of what we put in there in the bond for that, so that fits within that parameter?
I think so, I think based on initial, initial design, I think we're, we're in a good spot on that.
So, ag facility, we are working through ag facility, obviously, on this one, the location's a little more concrete, since we already know where our current ag facility is, uh, we, we feel like we've gotten a really good initial program requirements and specs from our ag teachers, feel like we've, we've gotten a good concept plan, our, kind of our step right now is we're trying to track down, uh, the architects that have most recently built facilities similar to the one we're looking at, and kind of go through a process of seeing who, who's built a, a facility that kind of meets our program requirements, so, what those program requirements are, is basically a new barn, which we've, we've said all along, be a new facility, talking with our staff, is we're wanting hog and poultry accommodations, so, somewhere in the range of seventy-five to eighty animals on the hog side, and twenty animals or so on the poultry side, and it was really, it was really interesting getting to hear that conversation about how we can get to those numbers, and the, the cycling period on how long they actually need poultry facilities, I had, I didn't realize that it was such a short turnover, from the time you bring your chicken in before you show him, and it's over with, I mean, it's only a matter of weeks.
It's over with.
Or a sheep and goat show up.
You don't want your chicken. Some chicks you went and put it by. You told it, it's over with.
Some storage is needed, they have some, they have some tractors and trailers and things out there, we need some general storage just for ag farm, uh, some, more storage for, uh, all of the, the feed and, and the materials that they need to work with their animals, this is also gonna allow us to take our current facility, that has some hogs and some poultry, and then make it where it's basically a sheep, goat, cattle facility, so there's actually gonna be a big benefit to our current facility as well, as we move all of the hogs and all the poultry into the new facility, and then some perimeter fencing around that area, there are some issues of predatory animals, dogs, coyotes, those sorts of things that come through there, so some fencing that might, not for the whole property, but just around the area where, where we're housing our show animals, to try to discourage that type, that type of interaction as well, so.
Yeah, that's close by, otherwise, get her out there, hunt.
She get on the car.
I think one of the ag teachers said that they saw a, a coyote chasing a deer through, through the facility on some of the cameras out there, so.
I've been hit up a lot about this one, and I think the main concern, and it sounds like you guys have addressed it this time, was just to make sure that the folks that are involved in the ag program get the input, because there were some missteps maybe on the last facility, it wasn't quite exactly what it should have been, and it sounds to be like you guys have addressed that in your stakeholder meetings, and then the different things just go around.
I, I feel like we have, our next steps, I mean, they, we, we, we had some examples from them of facilities they've seen that are similar to this, and like I say, the next step, whenever, once we go through architecture, then we, with the architect, to have a similar specification.
Are we housing any cattle out there at the moment?
Three or four, I think they said, so.
Three, three, we had one that left.
Yeah, three. South West Elementary addition, so I just had a, and it's, we had a, our materials were in last week, and then we had another meeting, stakeholder meeting on Friday, so even this has changed a little bit, but you can kind of see, our goal at South West Elementary was ten classrooms, music, art, new gymnasium, and some teacher space, and so, we feel like, and I'll, and I'll talk a little bit at the end about some, you know, preliminary pricing and things like that, we feel like we're gonna, we feel like we're in a place where we're gonna be able to address most of those needs, and, and our goal on capacity was to try to increase capacity by a hundred students if we can, and remove the, the four portables that were over there as well, so, we feel like we're on, we're on course through our design process, uh, to get that accomplished, so you can see here, if you can vision, this is kind of on the backside of the school, kind of on the, the southeast side of the school, so you can go down to the bottom right, that's the cafeteria, so as you, if you were to come out of the cafeteria, now where you have that long sloped hallway, you, if you hung a ride, you'd go right into the gymnasium, and you went down a little further, that would be your teacher areas, and then if you went down to kind of at the end of the, where the kindergarten, first grade hallway is right now, it's kind of the split-level hallway, if you kept going straight, you would go into the, to the new academic hall. You can kind of see a little, in a little more detail here, the academic portion would be a two-story design, five classrooms at level one, five classrooms at level two, uh, your music and art, uh, just to the, closest, closer to the main, main hallway of the school from there, and you see the gym.
Like, use your pointer pointing out, music and art floor, it's down there in the purple, is that right?
Yes, so this would be, uh, art here to the left, and music to the right.
What is P L. C.?
Um, an area for teachers to go for, like, their professional learning communities, teacher, teacher staff, staff meetings, your, your grade-level teams could go there to meet, you might, you might have some type of P D. in service, those sorts of things there.
And you showed me two concepts, the other one had more hallways, more square footage in the hallways, this is a more efficient use of our square footage, I think that's something, you know, at some point, needs to be touted a little bit.
More efficient use of square footage, only one construction site as opposed to two on the same campus, so, we're prefer, hopefully, with this model, less disruption of other, allowing that, that north side of the building to still be utilized and not be impacted by the construction, so that is first and foremost. That, that, the real feedback that came from the campus was, they like the proximity of everything on this one, and you wouldn't have ten new classrooms the furthest away from the cafeteria and gymnasium, was really the biggest selling point from them, is they like, you're, you're adding ten classrooms, music, art, and gymnasium, and your P L. C. room, all kind of in, in the heart of the school, and not on the extremities of the school. Just some things about this one is, we felt like that the program requirements are pretty much complete, the schematic design, uh, this, on this presentation was from October twenty-first, like I said, we had another one on November first, and tinkered with some things a little bit, but it still remained basically same concept. We are still going to get some pricing on that other concept too, and just see if there's a substantial difference, if there is, that could impact the final decision, but, but, our, our architect and our builder both feel like this is probably gonna be, uh, there's not a lot of difference between the two, we'll find out for sure. So schematic design, uh, basically, please, we're gonna get a schematic design estimate, cost estimates in November, uh, and quickly, within the next two weeks, so we anticipate before we leave for Thanksgiving, on all three of these projects, we're gonna have a, our initial cost estimates then, and that's gonna tell us a little bit more about the story, and then, we would come back with our design development estimates in December, uh, construction documents completed by March, the first G M. P. in April, uh, starting some of the, the construction stuff then, and then second G M. P. in June, and then completion in, in July twenty-twenty-four for twenty, fall twenty-twenty-four.
One thing that goes in connection with Southwest addition, an attendance boundary in Elementary thirteen, those three things have got to line up, because we're talking about increasing capacity at Southwest Elementary, so you're gonna have to adjust your attendance boundary for that, you're talking about opening a new school at Elementary thirteen, and you're talking about the attendance boundary process, and the timing of all of those, those three things is really important for us, we gotta get the attendance boundaries right, because we're at, at the right time, because we're looking at Southwest adding a hundred seats at their school, and opening a brand-new facility, so all those three things have to be connected together.
This, I wanna back crack.
Yep.
Because it just hit me, in our, in our agenda, are we gonna have those descriptions for the, uh, facilities, the naming of the facilities, will we have those in our agenda, or will we, will we see them the first time Monday night, when y'all present them to us?
For the naming of facilities, the description, like, for, here's the nomination, and here's what it's about?
Yeah, in case we wanted to do a little historical on our own.
Let me do a little thinking about that.
Okay.
I, I think originally, we were thinking that we would give those to you that night, but let me do a little thing about that.
Light Dr. Middle School addition, band hall, uh, is the primary addition there, and then, and then some locker rooms and training room, and, and some restrooms and concession area, uh, I just put the, the middle school, uh, band hall addition on here, um, this is kind of the, the draft version, so we're not to a final version on this yet, we're getting closer all the time, and we've had some really good meetings with band directors and principals, and finance directors, and athletic directors, and different stakeholders involved in this process, and feel like it's really gonna make a difference over there. We have a very, uh, a large band at that campus, a large orchestra at that campus, largest of all our middle schools, and this is gonna greatly, uh, increase efficiency and space that's needed for these large groups, and so, uh, we think we've got a really close on architecture program requirements, we, we finished up some, uh, sizing and measurements on some of the locker rooms and things like that this past week, uh, feel like we are gonna have our next big meeting on that towards the end of November, and then you can kind of see the schedule here mirrors the Southwest schedule, schematic design, we're gonna get some cost estimates in December, uh, design development, uh, estimates in March, and then construction documents later in the spring, and then a construction of July and August, so we will anticipate this project being complete prior to the opening of school in twenty-twenty-four, school year as well.
Is this on the east side of the campus? Were those portals?
It would be, it was not up that far, this, the band hall is actually kind of an extension of where the, the current space is, right, so.
It's, uh, the, the parent loop, uh, and the auxiliary gym, and it's off to that side, toward, toward the parent loop.
Okay.
Really kind of in the middle of the, of the building.
And then we're still trying to hammer out some details on where the best spot to put those two locker rooms and the restrooms and the, and the concessions for the, that's been one of the, one of the things, we had to go out and get a little more information on the campus, some little bit more accurate measurements, and then a little bit more input from our stakeholders on that. Um, Belton High School, uh, kind of opened this one up with a conceptual rendition of what the band hall could look like, final decisions haven't been made yet, but this is one of the early renditions, uh, this would be coming right off of that west side of the P A. C. and the gym, where those, the three portals currently are, in between the, the, that area and the swim center, so right there on the west side of the, kind of that, that extracurricular lane of the campus, um, kind of a, the, the draft version of this is, uh, really meeting what our headspace called for, with the band hall, a, a large on, two, a large ensemble room, a large percussion room, a smaller ensemble room, uh, some practice rooms, uh, offices, library, those sorts of things, we feel like it'd be very functional, the location of it is great, because it's gonna be the proximity for them to load their trailers and load and unload their equipment, it's gonna be a lot better than having a band hall that's in the interior of the school as of now, and we're looking at some options for practice, uh, outdoor practice, but even if we, even if they have to remain at the same outdoor place, this is a lot closer, a lot more convenient for them to travel to, so.
Where is this?
This was right off that west side by the, by the gymnasium, where those portals are, kind of in between the, the gym and locker room area, and then where the swim center is, that green space right there.
That green space for us.
What are we gonna do, what's the, what's the concept for the old, uh, band hall square footage, what, where are we looking at?
Black bucks, what, ideally, what we'd like to do at that is black bucks theater, because they, they don't have access to anything really close to that, a theater, uh, theater tent, uh, workshop, or a, a lab, a theater tent classroom, and then lots of storage, so they could bring props and costumes and all those things back down into the building, and not have them in the, in one of the metal building up by the stadium, which sort of swirl, that's not my knowledge. So we're thinking of moving a new facility for band, and then be able to repurchase that current band hall for theater department, that's what our ideal state of the project would be. C T. E. addition, so, as you know, we're kind of thinking about a, uh, as from the decision that we made, it's a C T. addition, phase one, along with a renovation, the current C T. E. facility, and then it would address a lot of needs, and then come back and, and finish up with a C T. E. addition, phase two, uh, in a future time, that would address the rest of the needs that we have as well, so, you can see here, this is a, this is kind of the latest version, that as, as, we've worked through this with our, our C T. E. department, with our architects, with our, uh, construction manager, and with, with our design team, is being able to basically have culinary arts, your audio, video, and R O. T. C., all in the new facility, and then taking, um, the existing facility, and basically having both of your construction shops, all of your ag, vent tech, those sorts of things, and then have a, a C T. E. teacher tank and office in there as well, also investing, one of the things that came out on board discussions was, the ones that couldn't be touched by this is making sure that we do. is making sure that we do everything we can and make sure we have a safe and cleanest. So there would be some investment in that building that has welding shop before old design to do some upgrades in that welding shop as well and the, and the interim before we can get to a phase two at some point. And, and removal of the old building that currently houses the, 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 the construction trades and the R O T C that, that really needs to go. So that was one of the, one of the, the priorities was to try to get, take that building offline if we could. We think we're going to be able to do that with this project.
I think it's important to note, y'all know this, but it's important to bring this up over the next five years. This is phase one. We knew this in the bond planning committee that we weren't going to be able to get all of the C T E things done for Belton High School that we need to get done. This is phase one in this bond. We will have to explore a phase two in a future bond and all of this. Mike will show you a little bit more about that compared to I think that there's, we're going to, there's a big chunk of stuff that we're excited about getting, getting upgraded in Belton High School, but then it's going to be some more that we've got to get after in the future.
And so we're kind of looking at a similar timeline on this project is kind of getting our, our schematic design estimates within the next couple of weeks, coming back with design development completed a little after, after the new year. And then coming back with the G M P one, starting some, some work then and then come back with the G M P two and, and construction really ramping up. Another thing we're not going to really touch on tonight, but we have had our initial meetings with, with high school staff about what those interior, of those interior renovations could potentially look like. Kind of getting some priorities from them on the things they would really like to see this addressed. And so we'll have more information as we come back to you guys in our next update on that. The, the third component of that, and I'm going to mention it briefly at the end, is, is there's a, there's a big component, more so at Belton High School than any of the other campuses where we're doing work. And that is some of the roofing, H VAC and some of those things. There's, there's, there was a significant amount of work and so Carl Robertson and their team has been helping. As we, as we've been doing our design concurrently, we've been kind of designing a, a, a schedule and things on the, a lot of that H VAC quarter could cost that work as well, H VAC and roofing work that's going to need to be done at Belton High School.
I saw something in the bulletin, I think, that talked about this summer has a huge impact on our H VAC. Fifty-seven days in a row, a hundred plus. We're having to make some adjustments with some of that, so yeah.
I, the gentlemen in here haven't gotten any phone calls about any H VAC issues, I'm sure with all of this here.
Not in the last twenty minutes.
It's been a hot year. There's, there's been a lot of strain on stuff and we have some aging things. So, and then you have a shortage of parts and delayed times and all sorts of stuff playing in all of this discussion, so.
Elementary twelve, I drove by yesterday, they're moving along quickly there. They're getting all their work done. So just a kind of a brief update, site clearing obviously is complete. The building pad is cut and, and all the fields are brought in. The preliminary excavation of the, of the ponds is complete. They're starting to do some of the paving and, and site cut and fill. The piers, I don't know, it's forty-something total piers, is that right? So are mostly done and then the underground utilities, they've started to put in the, some of the underground utilities for electrical plumbing, those sorts of things. So we should see a, a slab doing that pretty quick.
It's not free, it's not.
Huh?
It's not free. Who'd have thought you'd say that?
Elementary thirteen, moving along quickly, we, some really good news that we've had is, is, is a, I really wanted to say that the developer of the Harbor Branch subdivision, the city of Belton have, have really been good partners, we feel like, on this. And we feel like things are moving along about, you know, some of the, the concerns we had is would utilities be ready when we were ready to build? So we feel like some progress has been made in that. There's still some work to do, but we do feel like we're going to have a road. We feel like we're going to have sanitary sewer. We feel like we're going to have water lines and all those things that is needed to put in a building that's, you know, we've got to house eight hundred students at some point in time. So really wanted to say we're thankful for those partnerships and, and look forward to seeing what, what needs to be done from all three parties to, to get us where we need to be. Design development is complete. Construction documents are nearing completion. Bidding will happen in January and we expect to bring a full G M P to the board in February and then, and then start construction shortly thereafter. So still working on some construction schedules and timelines, trying to do everything we can to accelerate those to the greatest extent possible. And we feel like after we get the, the, the cost estimates back on everything and after we get the, the completion of the, of the construction documents, we should be able to get in a little more in a specific ballpark on, on construction timelines. So that, that'll be a big, cost estimates and construction timelines narrowed and, and more concrete should be a part of the next update.
I want to just, can you go back, Mike?
Yes.
I love the, the design of that, the conceptual design, the two-story model that they have there. I'm really excited to see how both of these projects, Elementary twelve and thirteen, with the same core and the same premise behind it all, are going to have two different footprints based on that. And I think it gives us some really neat flexibility for our system for the future. So I'm excited to see how this one comes out.
What about our buses?
Buses, I think that's on Keith. We got some coming. It sounds like as early as February. And all twenty should be here by March and April, so we're really excited about that.
So you already have the ones that you've already tagged that get offline when the, the new ones show up?
We have twenty new ones and we'll be phasing out, so.
And what do you do in a situation like that? Are the old ones worth anything? I mean, a bunch of old hippie vans lining up the mile.
We have, we put them in auction.
Somewhat true.
They'd be in deer, deer cans. We, we donated one to B C Y C last year or year before last as well. So there's several different things that we do.
All of these are just my favorite.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, remember, we tried to get fifteen years minimum out of them. And even then, we're evaluating to see what kind of shape they're in. So we, we, we try to get everything out of it we can, but yeah, there will be some that. That was one of the reasons for the urgency of going ahead and doing twenty now. We've got a really high volume that are going to come offline in the next couple of years. So that's important to try to get ahead of that, so. Well, and we weren't able to, as we added the fourth middle school, we added the second high school, that added a lot of trips. And we weren't really able to add, for financial constraints, the number of buses we needed to, just to get online to handle all those trips that we added.
I remember when I first got on the board, I was just forward, Dr. Kincaid came in a meeting and somebody gave a deal that said that one year we did two point one million miles. Do y'all still keep track of that? How many, do you have any idea what we're running now per year?
We can definitely, we'll, we'll incorporate that into a presentation coming up or some kind of fun facts because it's amazing.
Yeah.
There really is. Especially the district our side.
Well, transportation was in the department's spotlight last week. And I was seventy routes every day. That's a lot.
Lot going on. See a lot of buses out and about.
And we have some miscellaneous stuff going on, you know, looking at our Blair Street vacant properties. We talked about that last month. Schematic design work has already begun on safety vestibules, assessment of I D entry and implications throughout the district. We're, we're getting geared on that, looking at are there some things we can do over our transportation department to accommodate these new buses when they come in? Kind of the takeaways is we're, we, we're, we're going to get a lot closer to actual costs pretty soon. We really feel like we'll have some good estimates on our, on our projects that we don't have the, the estimates of the design documents. We think the inspects that y'all agreed last month, that, that came out as a result of all of our principal and department inputs and the work of our, our facilities assessment really have been beneficial. We've got lots of compliments from the different, we've been working with three different architects and several different construction managers. We've got a good feedback that that inspection document is on point and that it's well done and that it gives us really good information as they try to, try to design. And then we tweak from there, but it's given them some pretty good standards about, about what we have as a district and how we meet those K P A standards and all the other things that come from that. Stakeholder input has been great. We've had a lot of campus input, a lot of department inputs, and we're trying to be as active as we can. There will be opportunities for more for teachers and students and other things as we, as we refine down. But we felt a lot of the big programming discussions, we've had good stakeholder input from. And then the things we're looking forward to, accurate, more accurate cost estimates, more specific construction schedules, additional project initiatives and then substantial work on Elementary twelve. Is that, is that what's, that's wrong along that?
So I was talking to someone the other day who's in the commercial building part of this whole deal. And he said that they're anticipating after the first year steel prices are going to start coming down. That they're, they, a lot of those things are still trying to sell inventory and they're trying to keep the prices up. But that once they run through that inventory, they're, they're expecting steel prices to start coming back. And I think we may start seeing some adjustments in the concrete business too because of lack of, you know, new starts over the next six months. So it may not help us with twelve, but it might help us with thirteen because I don't know how far out they order those things. But we may have already ordered the steel. I don't know.
About for thirteen, so I think that's a, that's good for us to know and keep our eye on and all that. There's a, there's a really delicate balance that we're trying to play in all of this because there's the escalating construction cost world that we've been living in. But yet this notion of looming change in that coming forward. But it's hard to predict some of those things too. And then the same thing with some of our shortages and our delays and getting certain things. You know, you, you hear horror stories about having to wait eighteen months for something in the H VAC world. And then you find out, well, that's now changed to nine months. Well, that's a, that's a pretty significant change there. And that's the world we're living in, in the construction industry right now, is that all of that has been in flux. And so Mike's point, I think, was doing, we've been very, very happy with our three architects, I think, that we've been working with. Those architectural firms have been good. I'm working with our, our different C M A Rs and stuff. I think we've got good teams doing some of this that we're proud of the work that's been done. But there's, there's a whole lot of nuance to it right now that I don't think that has always had to happen.
All right, anybody else? Six point three.
Y'all will have some bragging acts over, also because I think they're talking about twenty-seven I N S last week.